Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the regularly scheduled meeting of the Wareham School Committee, August 22, 2019. If we could just rise to the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on the agenda is public comment. Does anyone wish to speak before the board? Seeing none. Moving on to good news. Does anyone have good news? No, there we go. Oh, thank you, yes. This is being recorded. It's been awhile. It's being recorded by the WCTV and also Ms. Ruiz is making a copy as well. If anyone else is wishing to record the meeting, you need to let the chair know, that's all. Thank you. And so, good news. Anyone have good news? Bless you.
Oh, yeah.
Ms. Bakayaki.
I just wanted to say that I was happy to be able to attend the Congratulations. ................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................
Awesome, thank you. And Ms. Bakayaki touched on it with the training. And now, it's something that on the 26th, there's going to be like a kickoff of sorts, right?
Yes. At 7:30, we will open the doors at the high school. We'll invite people to gather in. We will also, at 8 o'clock, invite everyone into the auditorium at the high school where we will have our opening ceremony and addresses. And then, we're off and running.
And school committee members are welcome to attend?
Sure.
Awesome, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
We have a presentation of retirement plaque to Gary McNeil.
Yes, I'd like to invite Mr. Palladino to come up.
So, I'm really excited that we're recognizing Gary McNeil because Gary just started working just before me and he...
Yeah, Gary, come on up. They're going to make you speak too, Gary, so come on up.
So, Gary started working, I believe, as a sub just before me. And he was always in charge of the area that I taught in for 12 years. And he was one of the most well-respected custodians in the building and probably one of the nicest guys you'll ever meet. He has a great personality, was always willing to do all the extras. And I think everyone at the high school, first of all, they miss him, but more importantly, they respected him for the job he did. And he just was a great people person and a great custodian. And I was disappointed to hear that he'd be retiring, but I know it's probably what's best for him. And he's done over 26 years of service to the district. And I wish him well in his retirement, health in his retirement. And Gary, you're always welcome back as a sub custodian because we're always in need. So, anytime you want to come back, you're more than welcome.
My price is higher.
Well, I'll work on your per diem rate. I'll work on that. But the school committee has a great plaque recognizing Gary McNeil for an appreciation of your dedication service to the children of Wareham, June 21, 1994 to May 28, 2019. Gary, congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all. I just want to say one thing. It wasn't my idea to retire. It was a disease that I got. But I'm fighting it and I'm staying. That's good. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on, report of the student representative.
Hello, everyone. It's nice to be back. So, we're already jumping right in for this school year. Summer's over. Starts Wednesday, August 28. That's really soon. Too soon. Today's been like a pretty eventful day because a lot of fall sports have started like tryouts and practices. And also, we got our schedules for this year. So, a lot of fun surprises with that. So, something I was a part of, the Key Club Car Wash was on August 10. And we raised over $400. So, we'll put that to good use. And the homecoming date is already set for October 5 on Saturday. So, that should be fun. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions for Mr. Bridge?
Papa!
Okay. Moving on, minutes of the meeting, June 20, 2019. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, say nay. Any abstentions?
Aye. I wasn't here that meeting.
Yeah. Alright, thank you. That passes 401. Onto the spring athletic report. Mr. Rodriguez.
One thing about Mr. McNeil, we had the banners that go up. Nobody really wants to do that. And he was one of the guys that would do it. And that's not an easy thing. And again, I would like to wish him well in his retirement. He was a really, really good guy to work with down at the gym. Spring athletic was one of our better springs in awhile. Three teams qualified for the tournament. Highlighted by the girls tennis team winning the gold section of the conference. Again, our team has won conference sportsmanship awards, baseball and outdoor track. The MIA recognized the boys and girls track team for their community service, which has been happening quite a bit here at Wareham. And overall, it was a very successful spring season. We had the athletic awards at the end highlighted by Taylor Carlson, Julian Rodding winning the athletes of the year. And in general, it was a pretty good season.
I'll open up for questions?
Yeah.
Okay. Anyone have any questions regarding the report? Ms. Bakayaki.
Well, I don't have any questions. But I wasn't going to put the numbers into my little spreadsheet, but I couldn't help myself today. So, the good news is, it's much more equal. The boys-girls thing, it's going in the right direction. So, I just wanted to share that with you. And I just want to congratulate all the teams on their high GPA.
Yeah, that always amazes me. That really does.
It does me also, yeah. So, I just want to congratulate all the teams on that.
And we have some representatives of our spring teams here. We have Mr. Sweat, if you'd like to come on up here. He's a tennis coach, girls tennis coach that had a phenomenal season.
You have some athletes too.
Yeah.
Coach Gabe's here.
I'm going to have them all come up. You want one at a time or you want them?
Whatever you like.
Okay.
Do you want me to say something?
Yes. Well, I mean, I can say he's, Coach puts in a lot of time and effort. And I'm so happy for him this season that we got over the top and almost beat old Rochester, which would have been a tremendous accomplishment. But they've come a long way in the last few years. And this gentleman to my right puts in a lot of time and effort.
So, we had a great year. Some of you may have heard that we had a great player come into our midst. You may not realize, but he lost a great player to the track team.
She's here.
She just happens to be sitting behind me.
The same great player?
No. Fortunately, we had a great player come to replace another great player. They also happen to be great people, which is really nice. I won't go over the whole season because it's a matter of record and it was a wonderful season. But I do want to thank some people that don't routinely get thanked. One is the Booster Club just hangs in there and just keeps doing good things. And we have a representative here from the Booster Club. Doesn't get much attention, but they're always so accommodating to the athletes and what we need to help the team be as good as it can be. Another person who hangs around but doesn't get noticed all that much, frankly, is the guy next to me. This person is always, in a different way than the Booster Club, always there when I need anything. And frankly, to make last year happen required not only Mr. Rodriguez, but also Mr. Palladino. But most importantly, and this doesn't get said often enough, the great player that we got only came because of the work of Wareham Public Schools to make the, well, not so much the middle school because she was so accelerated, but to make the high school an incredibly powerful lure for people who understand what's going on there. It doesn't get said much, you know, but the fact is that she would not be here if she didn't think she was going to get a great education at Wareham High School. And to top it off, even though we lost two seniors last year, we had a young lady from Aponequit come here. She wasn't happy at Aponequit, and now she's really happy that she's here. And she's happy because of the reputation of Wareham High School. I can tell you, a coach, a coach cannot do anything without a great reputation for the building in which these kids spend most of their time. Tennis is a small piece, small piece of the academic experience. The much larger piece is what Mr. Palladino does at that high school. So, thank you to both of you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
On that note, I remember my first time on the school committee. And I was actually during the election. I hadn't even been on this committee yet. And I had talked with Mr. Palladino. And that was the year we went all the way with the basketball. And I kept saying, "Yeah, how about the basketball team? They're doing so great." It's like, Mike, I don't get evaluated on how good our sports do. So, that, yeah. So, that's, sports are a tiny piece of it. But we're doing a great job. Anyone else have anything for Mr. Sweat?
Thank you for your support.
Thank you.
We have Josh Flaherty here to represent the boys tennis team. Come on up, Josh. Come on up.
Mike, make sure you ask him a few questions, please.
I've been kind of sworn to silence, but I can't help it.
No, you have to.
We had an alright season. We didn't win a lot of matches, but we have a very young core. So, we'll definitely be able to grow. We have, I think, this year, I was the oldest kid on the team as a junior. And then, we also had, just below me was Alex Lambert. He's going to be a junior this year. But we had at least five eighth graders on the team and they plan to stay. So, that's good news. So, hopefully, they'll do pretty well eventually. Any questions or anything?
Anyone have any questions for Mr. Flaherty?
No, I'll just congratulate him on his honorable mention.
Thank you.
Conference.
Thank you. So, I got home and, you know, I knew I had to ask this question because I needed to know what I was talking about here. I said, "What's snap racing?" It's like, "What do you mean snap racing?" That's what it says, "Snap racing." That's what you did for fundraising, "snap raising." I guess it was misspelled. It was "snap-raising." So, that was, you know, like a GoFundMe. I didn't know what snap racing or raising was. That was pretty funny. And so... And so, obviously, you know, sports start before school starts. And he was out all day doing soccer today. Got a lot of color. But I'll go easy on him today.
Oh. Thank you.
Thank you, Josh.
You're welcome.
We have two players from our track team, Natalia Molding and Isaac Saleem. Come on up, please.
What's up, big guy?
Welcome.
Hi.
Oh, alright.
Congratulations. Yeah. Okay, I'm going to go first. Good evening. Mr. Gardner apologizes for not being here this evening as he could not reschedule for a prior commitment. But, we're here. My name's Natalia Molding. I'm a rising senior and a captain of the girls track and field squad. In Coach Gardner's 11th season coaching the girls team, the outdoor season produced many great individual performances. 11 out of the 21 athletes on the team qualified for our conference meet. At the conference meet, Julian Rodding placed fifth overall in the long jump. Ryan McSherry placed seventh in the 100. I placed sixth in the 400. And the 4x100 relay team of myself, McSherry, Madison Peckham, and Ryan Tripp placed fifth. For the 11th season in a row, under Coach Gardner, several athletes qualified for our postseason tournament. At the MIA Division 4 Championship, McSherry placed 27th overall in the 100. I placed 17th overall in the 400. Adriana Dillon placed 13th overall in the mile. Rodding placed 11th overall in the pentathlon and 16th overall in the long jump. And the 4x100 team of myself, McSherry, Peckham, and Tripp placed 19th overall. Along with annually having one of the highest GPAs among all sports teams in Wareham High School, our team was awarded the MIA Educational Athletics Achievement Award for our work at the Wareham High School Unified Track and Field Squad meets. Of the 21 student athletes in this past season squad, only two were seniors. So, next year's squad should return about 90% of our athletes. That's what I have.
Sorry, my fault. My name's Isaac Saleem. I am a rising senior and a captain of the boys track and field squad. In Coach Gardner's first season coaching the boys team, the outdoor season produced many great individual performances. 13 out of 21 athletes on the team qualified for our conference meet. At the conference meet, Brandon Pham placed fourth overall in discus and placed fifth, and I placed fifth in the long jump and fourth in the 400. At the MIA Division 4 Championships, the 4x4 relay team of Gabriel Sylvia, Benjamin Majali, Kevin DeColibis, and myself placed 17th overall. I placed 18th overall in the 800. And Devin Gonzalez placed 12th overall in the 110 hurdles and eighth overall in the pentathlon. Our team was also awarded the MIA Educational Athletic Achievement Award for our work in the Wareham High School Unified Track and Field Squad. Of the 21 student athletes of this past season squad, only three were seniors. So, next year's squad will return 85% of their team and have high expectations.
Very good.
Impressive.
So, how many of the spring track kids will continue for the winter track season? Is it mostly the same amount of kids? Or you guys will do both winter and spring?
Yeah.
I would say yes because most of the younger kids are both doing winter and spring. They're not like merging into like other sports like basketball or anything. So, my prediction is like everyone who stays right now is going to build the team. And like, we're going to be really good in the next upcoming years.
I know my son really enjoyed being a part of the track team when he was there. And I know he wants to try again for the winter. So, congratulations on all of your placements. And of everything, I think your MIA award for helping with Unified Track stands above all of the other, as good as those are, you know, being recognized for your, you know, your community involvement is huge. So, congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Nope. I just want to say congratulations and thanks for coming tonight.
Thank you.
And I do want to especially commend the girls outdoor track for their community service and helping out with Don't Trash Wareham. That takes some work. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, I'd like to have Coach Gabe from our baseball team come on up.
Oh, yeah. I'm going to need that.
How we doing?
Welcome.
Thank you. I just wanted to say I'm very happy and proud of the boys for what they accomplished this year. We finished off the season this year with an 11-9 mark on the season. First time in seven years that they made the playoffs. And first time in 10 years that we actually got a playoff win. So, I was very happy with what they were able to accomplish this year. Numbers were a little bit down this year on the JV level. We were able to finish the season, almost finish the season this year with a full JV squad. The year before, we had to cut the season in half due to the numbers out there, which included even eighth graders on the team. But it seems to continue to grow each and every year. From, this is my third year here as a coach. It's grown each year since I've been here. Hopefully, next year, we'll be able to get a full varsity roster as well as JV roster going out there and competing against in the SEC next year. We were also able to lock down the sportsmanship award for the South Coast Conference, which was voted upon by all the coaches in the league for our team, which was a very good accomplishment for the team this year. We are young. We only graduated two seniors this year. So, again, we hope to compete next year with the players that we have as well as the young kids coming up. So...
Thank you. Any questions, anyone?
No questions. Just thank you and congratulations.
Coach Gabe's done a remarkable job with the program. It's really heading in the right direction. And we're lucky to have him as our baseball coach.
Yeah.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. I was at that last game and it was hard fought, you know.
That was a nail biter.
It was, it was. Thank you.
Next, our softball coach, Rebecca Pratt.
Good evening, school committee.
Good evening.
This is very different.
Yeah, you're on the other side, huh?
Thank you so much for having us and giving us the opportunity to come and talk about our teams. This was my first year as a coach of the varsity team. And most of you that know me know, I am beyond passionate about softball. I'm beyond passionate about the school and the hidden talent that we have within our midst. It was an okay year. We came out with five wins, which was a definite improvement over the year before. They were hard fought. But our girls are tough. You know, we played some really tough schools. We play against a lot of larger schools. And though we may not have come out with the W on a lot of those games, they left shaking their head saying, "Wareham showed up." The girls really represented, I think, not just our school, but our town really well throughout most of the season. I can't even just say how proud I am. The GPA that you mentioned is exactly right. We had not one, not two. We had seven of our players that were nominated and awarded a national award that was actually put together by the Easton Corporation, the makers of bats, equipment, things like that, through the NFCA, the National Fast Pitch Coaches Association. So, we had seven of our young ladies in the softball program here at Wareham received an All-American Athletic Scholar Award, which means not only are they really in tune with their community, they have to, number one, be a leader in their community. They have to be a good student and good standing. But they have to have a remarkably high GPA and a dedication to their sport and to their school. So, that was a huge, I think, accomplishment for our team, for our department, and then for the school. We made it to tournament, which, you know, was an amazing surprise to us. But we held our own against, I think, teams that were really in our division and in our bracket for size of school. And we went into that game and we really could have and should have probably come out number one. But we played the number one seed and we took them to eight innings. And we left that game with the other team's fans actually applauding our young ladies saying, "Well fought game." So, I think that was a huge compliment to us and to our team for those pieces. Like baseball, numbers were a little tough for us. We didn't really get to finish out the JV season. Through the beginning of the year, we lost several players to injuries. And then, it's just hard playing at the varsity level and having the other commitments, whether it's two-year grades. As you see, we have a really high GPA. Our girls really care about making sure they can spend the time they need and have priorities. So, it was kind of tough. You know, we ended up, I think, with 16 girls at the end of the season. So, that's not really enough for two teams. So, our JV and varsity merged. And they did a phenomenal job still representing us throughout that. It was my first year as coach. I probably made some bad calls and sent people home when I shouldn't have. But I have to also agree with Coach Sweat. The support that I got from the gentlemen at this table has been phenomenal. There to always answer my questions. I see absolutely no difference between boys and girls sports. The support, everything that we need is hands down exactly the same. Phenomenal support. Everything that we possibly needed and then some. You know, the improvements to the field were amazing. The girls stepped out day one and were just like, "Oh, my gosh." Every team that came over says, "We look forward to coming and playing Wareham." We tell our teams, "This is the need. This is the one you have to make because of the field and the environment and the lights and the music." So, that's also a huge compliment to us. I couldn't have done it without, I would say, the support. It does take a village, you know. You guys have heard me say that for awhile. I had three of the most amazing parent volunteers unpaid who made almost every single game. And I want to make sure they kind of get the recognition. Rudy Cadena and Bob and Sherry Serrato. Every single game, they were there. They made it to practice. They helped with everything we needed. It takes a village. It's hard. And then, the support of these two gentlemen, Mr. Palladino, every time I see him, "Hey, Coach, how's it going?" And he knew exactly what happened at the last game. That was amazing. You know, we had, you know, some ups and downs. Ed was always there coming out to the field, talking to our girls. We lost power. We thought, "Oh, my gosh. This huge game was supposed to be really important against one of our big rivals. We have no power, no lights, no music." He shows up, you know, well after he was probably due to be at home or eat dinner. And he was there. And I can't say, that just meant a lot to us to have those pieces there. Thank you again for all the support. And I hope to goodness to have, you know, the chance to tell you that we have twice as many wins next.
Awesome. Anyone?
Coach did a really good job. First year, she was, what I liked about her was she was asking a lot of questions, constantly calling me, which I like. I mean, I want somebody like that.
Too many.
No, I'd rather have it that way anytime. And I like that. She's trying to get better at her job, always trying to head in the right direction. And I thought, she has a lot of passion for a sport, which I like. And I think she's going to become a very good coach.
Thank you.
Awesome. Anyone have anything for...
Just thank you. Thanks for coming and sharing.
Thanks for having us. We appreciate the opportunity to brag about our teams.
Thank you. Definitely represent the team really well. And I want to say, the field looks awesome.
Yeah.
Right? I mean, it's come a long way.
It does. Amazing.
Yeah, that's really nice.
I'd like to thank the superintendent for that, too. That helped us out with that.
Thank you. Thank you.
Once you said about the state tournament, what happened is we're finally in a division that we belong. That's why they played the top seed, we lost two to one. Our league in softball is ridiculous and so there's seven schools that are in a much higher division. So there's three schools in our division, that's why we're able to go to the state tournament. And I told them, "We're, we're gonna compete." And we almost won, two to one against the top seed and it wasn't a fluke. It was, this is where we belong.
Yeah, good, good. And, uh, congratula, congratulations to Jocelyn as well for the All-Star.
Thank you. We, we had, we had, uh, several girls that did phenomenal and have been recognized outside. I want to make sure, uh, Molly Johnson and Grace Sorato kind of get, they, they also made honorable, honorable mention for, uh, super team. So that, that's huge. And we're bringing them all back. We only lost one senior who was not on the varsity team, so look out.
Okay. And, and I, you know, actually I love watching the softball games. They, there's so much more excitement than on the, when you're watching the boys, you know what I mean? They really get it, they do. They, they really get into it. They really like coach each other on and whereas the boys is just, I know, I, I, I know all the boys, you know, they, you know, but, but it is just more exciting. I, I, they really get into it.
Thank you.
Great signs.
Thank you.
They were really neat.
Thank you.
And I'm sure I, I speak for all of us and I say, I can't wait to watch your team grow.
Thank you so much, Emily.
Well, what's up? Uh, well, no, we got still the report, right?
Oh, we did it?
Yeah, I'd like to know, I'd like to go over some numbers and stuff, so. Wanted to give them their, their due and get out if they could. So, so, um, just, just some quick questions. And I've probably asked this before and I, I just still don't understand it. So why is there, why are we paying for bus drivers and transportation?
There's two separate, uh, bills. One is for gas and fuel and one is for the bus drivers. That's how they break it down.
Okay. And then membership dues, uh, it looks like only the boys' track and girls' track are the only ones paying dues. What's up with that?
Well, the South Coast Conference runs these big track meets and not everybody has the facility, so to speak, to do it. So you pay dues towards this, everybody chips in and, and it's balanced out between all the schools. So I'll get a bill for whatever it may be and we all split it, uh, the whole conference.
But they also pay their activity fee, too? The student, the sporting activity?
I think that fee, I think, Ed, you're referring to the winter fee. The, the, it's a spring is, uh, to allow these students to compete in the Saturday meets, the state invitational, the state relays. So there are additional fees based on the number of students you bring. There's a fee per student, so that's what that number represents.
Interesting. All right, so, so I see that and then I go to the next page. And it says all sports, like fourteen ninety-six and then season to, oh, season total, so it's about thirty-two hundred, so I'm guessing the fall must have something as well.
So any, any of your track meets have, uh, invitational fees because they're, uh, select, so you don't bring everyone. So there would be, uh, if we had cross-country, it would be cross-country, winter track and spring track would have fees.
Okay. I think that's it. Uh, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, thanks for inviting the coaches to come. That's really nice of them.
No, that's fine. I mean, uh, it's, it's good for them to get recognized, too, because they work hard.
Yes, so thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, we're onto the review of the Walker Report, Special Education, Melissa Fay, Director.
Do I have to go to there or do you? Kim has it, okay. Good evening, everybody. Nice to see everybody. Hope you had a good summer.
Welcome.
I just wanted to do a quick rundown. I know, um, we want to talk about the Walker Report a little bit, but I just want to do kind of a quick rundown about summer because we had a lot of stuff going on this summer. We ran our extended school year program this year, um, which because of all the different, um, programs going on in different buildings, we actually had it decast this year. We had over a hundred students, um, receiving services there. We had a five-week program, a six-week program and a one-week boot camp as well as all of our related services. We ran it from July first to August sixth and this year, for the first time, we were able to not only serve breakfast and snack to the students, but every student was able to go home with a bag lunch as well, which is new this year. And Dr. Shaverhood kind of helped make that happen with, um, a few of the teachers who had asked for it. So we're really excited about the ability to be able to do that for our students. Um, we had some pretty exciting stuff because we were able to have five college interns this year who are all participating in educator prep programs from across the state and actually some from across the country. And we also were able to support some of the high school interns that work for the town of Wareham that came over to help us out with creating packets, copying, um, helping out on the playground, um, handing out lunches. Uh, so that was really exciting to have some of the young people from Wareham and surrounding communities working with us through the town in partnership with the school. We were also able, oh, I did that already, okay. Um, we had some summer professional development going on. Two things that we had going on, um, one I didn't actually forgot to mention here, but we have six new teachers that, um, not new to the district, but new to Wilson, are going to be embarking on a year-long professional development, getting certified in Wilson reading. Um, they started this summer with a three-day intensive beginning workshop and now they will go for the entire year doing an online course, um, where they have to meet competencies and be observed. And at the end of the year, uh, they will create a portfolio and they will be reviewed by the Wilson team at Pittsburgh State University and they will receive their Wilson program. So this is all being funded through one of our grants for program improvement and we're really excited to have the ability to have those teachers participate in this. In addition to this, we were also able to use some of our leftover grant money from last year to help get together the rest of our new, um, procedural manual for special education because we haven't had one, um, that is updated for a little, for a few years. So it was nice to be able to get together a group of educators from across all the different schools, um, to be able to get that together. And that should be coming out and be available hopefully within the next month. We're just kind of tweaking a couple of things. We'd, we'd like to go digital with it, so we're trying to get some help, um, adding links instead of having paper copies of everything so that people can easily get to the documents and the resources that they need. Okay, so program evaluation, um, for some of you, you already know that every few years the Department of Education asks us to do a self-study, um, of our special education programs. And we participate in what's called a coordinated program review. We, that happens every three years. We don't have a choice. It's not like just certain districts get chosen. As a, as a result of that coordinated program review, they, uh, provide us with an improvement plan and we need to write a corrective action plan that we need to then be monitored on for a period of time. So I, when I came into Wareham two years ago, I was working on the corrective action plan from the previous coordinated program review before I came. And we're going into now our self-study year and part of this process through the Department of Ed is we have to, um, hire our own consultants to come in that are outside of our school district to come in and take a look at our programs and give us feedback, um, and input about our programs so that we can look at ways to improve them and get that outside feedback. So this year, we were able to do that, um, in two areas. One is our related services and one is just our programming in special education in general. So our related service programs were, um, that was conducted by Educational Therapy Services, which is pretty local. They completed that on June twenty-fourth and the final report was provided to us on July eighth. They looked at all of our related services and all of our practices and our compliance. So they looked at speech and language, at physical therapy, occupational therapy. They also looked at our BCBA's, our Board Certified Behavior Analysts, um, and anybody who was doing, um, applied behavior analysis in our classrooms as well. And we use that, as with any of our program reviews, as kind of a roadmap to set up our strategic plan for our department, to create goals and to do, uh, program improvement and kind of set initiatives and look for funding to fund those initiatives for improvement. The other program review was conducted by Walker Consulting. I chose Walker or I requested that we have Walker only because I've worked with them in other districts and so they, they have a reputation for, in the state, of kind of doing a really nice, comprehensive job. They completed, uh, on June third and the final report was provided to us around July second. And they looked at all of our current special education programming from our sub-separate groups for our more intensive needs, all the way down to our, um, just accommodations, might be building, um, accommodation plans, uh, our 504s. They looked at all of our IEP services, whether it was, um, integrated into classrooms or sub-separate, pull-out, push-in, everything. They looked at all of our models. And again, this is, we use this as kind of our roadmap for improvement and planning. So if, I know that you guys got a copy of the report. It is very long, so I'm not gonna go over the entire thing because we'd be here all night. But I think the good thing about these two evaluations that we had done, these program evaluations and the related service evaluation, is there was nothing on them that was surprising to me. And so that was a really good feeling because I felt like in my leadership team, there were no surprises. We knew that, uh, what our areas of need were, what we had to work on and it was nice to have somebody recognize our successes, um, and identify the same needs that we were looking at. So I thought that that was, for me, that felt good. It felt like I'm, I had a good, that our leadership team has a good, comprehensive view of what our programs look like, what they're really great at and what we still need to improve. A couple of the main recommendations from the related service plan that are things that we're going to move on to goals that we're gonna be working on, um, was to adopt a workload versus caseload model. So instead of having, um, this is gonna be a much easier, um, I think, method for our related service providers because we need to look at how much work they do, not how many people are on their caseload because there's clearly, one student might get thirty minutes, one student might get ninety minutes a week. So we need to look at what their workload is versus what their caseload is and so that's what we're trying to move towards. So we're, we're in the works of creating and adopting some of the recommended documents that they provided in the appendices of this report, um, to try to adopt some of those to make things smoother, easier and have our related services kind of doled out in a more, um, efficient and equitable way for our students. The second one is training regarding eligibility for related services and this is something that's ongoing. We have training through the state. We also have training through, um, uh, legal resource publications. I, I purchased training materials through them that I go over with all of our team chairs who participate in all the eligibility determinations for the entire district. So that is something that's ongoing. Through PD, we do that twice a week and at least once a month, um, with the state. The third thing was to create clearly defined roles and responsibilities for related service providers. That's another thing that we are looking at through our procedural manual that I had mentioned before that we'd been working on over the summer, just to make sure that, um, everybody's roles are very clearly defined so that expectations are clear and so that we're working more efficiently to service our students. And then the fourth one was in-service professional development for general education staff regarding related services, what those mean, what they look like and what, how the partnership can exist between general ed, special ed and related services for the better of all of our students. And we're in the pla, um, process of planning for next summer and the following school year because our PD calendar is very, very full. So we are, um, in the process of getting that professional development and training together, hopefully by next summer. So for programming recommendations, this is now the Walker Report. I think one thing that I like to point out about the report because I know when, when we looked over the Walker Report, there were some areas that we always look at and go, "Why didn't they see that? Like, we do that already." But I think in hindsight, I have to remind myself that when we have a program review, people come in for a very short snapshot of time, just like when the state came in. They come in for a little short period of time and they see what they can see during that period of time, but they don't see everything. So they rely on us to kind of fill in the holes, um, of what really goes on and what we do on a daily basis that they might not see during the time that they're here. But I think the main things that I took out of the report that I think are, are going to help me and my department move forward with goals and initiatives, um, that will improve programming for our students, were articulation of programs and services. So we're working, um, we worked over the summer, we're finalizing it right now, just of kind of that articulation of what every program is, um, what defines it, um, what's, what students it services and what services are provided within that program. How do we enter a student into that program? How do we know when that student has met the criteria to exit that program to a less restrictive program? And those are all things that we have worked very hard over the summer to clarify in this procedural manual that is going to give everybody across the district the same vision of every program so that it will look the same from Kay all the way to our students who stay with us until they're twenty-two. Alignment is another big piece and it's something that we've been working on since I've been here and I think probably before me with Bev Shea. So that alignment of programs between buildings and between grade levels. Ongoing job-alike meetings is one of the things that we're doing right now and trying to increase. So being able to get the psychologists together, being able to get the social workers together, the team chairs together, um, the special education department chairs together so that people can share ideas, uh, resources, um, troubleshoot issues and support each other and also come up with procedures and methods of doing things that might make things more efficient for everybody. So that's something that we're going to, we're already doing some of, but we're hoping to expand that this year. New programs, um, we do have some new programming in the works because we do have some areas that, um, are, we, we have some students who we don't have exactly the programming that I would like to see for them right now because we need to be able to, um, do a program with fidelity. So it need, we need to go and see what those programs look like and that's what we've been doing, visiting other programs that are successful. One of the examples I put here is the high-functioning autism population. So we have something in the works now. We've been to see other programs. We've visited with other professionals in other districts. We've talked to some of the collaborative programs that do this very well to see what it is that we need to be successful with programming like this in our district. And we're hoping that if all goes well, we will be able to look at some, a program like that for next school year. And then paraprofessional training, oops, sorry, inclusive practices. So this is something that when I came in, we had, the teachers had just finished a big PD that was two years long about inclusion. And so I think we need to kind of do some refreshers in it, but I would like to see some more ongoing professional development with inclusive practices and also just kind of assisting and getting the general ed and special ed teachers together to just give them more ideas of how to modify curriculum and how to provide more access for all students. And then paraprofessional training was the last thing that I really took out of the report. We do have some training that I've implemented since I've been here. So we've done the applied behavior analysis training, which were, uh, for the paraprofessionals that work with our students who have autism. And then we also, last year, were able to offer that registered behavior technician to work in some of our TLC programs and in other places and, and programs in the school. And we're looking to expand that training this school year right now that we're in. So we're gonna be offering RBT and ABA again this year. Parent engagement, always huge. So this is an area that we know, um, that we have been trying desperately to increase our CPAC, to have events, to bring in resources, to speak to parents. We put a lot of work into it and I think CPAC leadership puts a lot of work into it. Um, and unfortunately, we just haven't found the perfect recipe for getting the parents here, even though we would love to see them. So it's always the same kind of group of parents that come and we appreciate them coming so much, but we would love to be able to expand that. Um, and actually, last year, April gave me some good ideas about things that she thinks we should do, spreading out into like the community and advertising a little bit more widespread. And so those are all things that we're considering with CPAC leadership for this coming school year. We're also looking at, um, again, doing some of those programs that we did last year, like hopefully a mental health awareness night again, that will be more, um, heavily attended, hopefully. Also, um, continuing with our question and answer forums, which seem to be pretty popular. Parents like to come and ask a lot of questions about programming, about different initiatives. They also like an opportunity to kind of, I think, have, um, some rapport with the staff and with me about issues that they're having, concerns they have. issues that they're having, concerns they have. And it's been pretty well-attended, so we're gonna continue on with those. Continued revision of the special education page on our website. So we are working with our technology folks as well as the leadership of CPAC to make sure that we have lots of resources on that, and we're gonna try and update it for this coming school year, so it's more user-friendly for parents, because a lot of parents seem to struggle or have questions or want more information that we're not providing them on there. So I wanna make sure that we kind of survey parents on what it is that they're looking for off this webpage, so that I can hopefully bring everything that they might have to visit six other websites for and get it on our website, so that they can just click on a link and go. And then our redesigned office space. So we kind of looked at our office space for student services, and we have a lot of parents and with young children that come through our office, and it wasn't very user-friendly, so we are creating, we created actually already, kind of a more welcoming space. We put a lot of pictures of our students that we will change periodically throughout the year of all grade levels. We also have a parent resource library that we're building right now in our office where parents can come and borrow books from us or do book trades with us. We also have subscriptions to a couple of magazines related to, one is, I think, learning disabilities, one is a special education parents magazine, and another one is an autism parenting magazine. So we have those three available in our office for people to come and copy articles or to look through. And we're also in the process of setting up a computer workspace for parents because we have, parents have expressed the lack of being able to access computers when it comes to being able to copy things or fax us things or DocuSign things for us when it comes to IEPs and related paperwork. So we're gonna try and make a space where they can come in and feel welcome to do that. And we also have like a little play area set up for when they have to bring their younger children with them, so there's a place for them to color and read books and I took a couple pictures, so that you guys can kind of see where we're going with it. Hopefully you guys will be able to come by and visit, and we're looking forward to the new school year.
Thank you very much. All right, opening up to some questions? Ms. Morgan?
I just have a few.
A few.
So my first question is, you said that the procedural manual that you worked on this summer was K through twelve, right? So why wasn't preschool included?
Well, preschool is going to have a different, because we have a preschool department chair, we're gonna do a different preschool manual because it's got different paperwork, and we have to kind of do a different preschool page as well, because the preschool paperwork, registration, processes are different. So we wanna make sure that we have all of the correct information on there. So that is going to be in the works, but right now we needed to get that K through twelve one ready for the coordinated program review, because I think two thousand and twelve was the last time that it was done. So it was something that we had been cited on last coordinated program review, so I wanted to make sure we made some good progress with it before they come back, because I wanna be able to present them. And plus, it's a need. Like, we have the need to have documents that all special ed teachers can access quickly, and we don't have that right now in a way that's easy for them to get. So it, we're trying to make it like a click.
You're putting it in a Google Doc?
We're trying, well, we're, we're trying to do Google Doc, but there's a lot, we're having struggles with some people who don't feel comfortable using that, but we're trying. That would be our goal, is to have a physical manual or a couple copies in every building, in the superintendent's office, in my office, and in every building with the principals and the team chairs, but also the ability for people who are tech savvy to be able to go on and just click a link. I need this, you know, related service log. You just go on your computer to Google Docs, click in the folder, and print it, and it's right there. And you don't have to go digging through a book and go photocopy it. So we're trying to like become more tech-aware, but we're working on it.
So staying on the preschool for a little bit, I was looking at the numbers that they had in there. And they were saying that, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, I don't have, unfortunately, I'm not.
I have it in front of me, but I don't have my glasses, so I'll try.
So they were saying that there are eighty special ed children, I believe, in the preschool program?
That sounds, I don't have the numbers in front of me because I didn't pull them, but I would say at last count, that was, last time I looked at the numbers, it was in the seventies. Yeah.
And I know that they made a comment about it being higher than the state average. But when I was there, and that was over six years ago, that was about the same number. So it really hasn't gone up. So have you looked at that at all to see if it's increased over the years?
It has increased. Yeah. I mean, I, again, I could, I can get those numbers for you, but I don't have them on me right now, but I could absolutely get them for you.
One of the numbers, though, that I, I'm fairly certain is wrong, is the, they said there were twenty-five students and substantially separate in the preschool. And how many classrooms do you have sub-separate?
Well, the preschool's tough because we are so over, we have a lot of preschool students and not a lot of space. And because we're not in the new building, right? We kind of had to be creative with our space, so the preschool department chair has done a great job of kind of reorganizing to make sure that we're able to cover everything, but we're getting pretty tight. So it would be lovely if we had more space, but we don't. So we just kind of have to think outside the box in the way we do things. And Bethany is, Mrs. Chandler's amazing at kind of rotating things around to create space when we need to, and she and I will walk through and kind of try to decide where we're gonna move something to make the room, and we've had to do that a couple times this past year. You know, but I think that we, we do the best we can with the programming and the space that we have. And we were also kind of short of the staff as well, so we were able to hire another teacher, which is something now that gives us a little bit more flexibility. But we've had to kind of divide and conquer programs in order to make space for all the students who have a need. So substantial programs, it's not necessarily a substantial room that we have, because some are mornings, some are afternoons. So I'd have to have the department chair here to like tell you every single room that is completely sub-separate, but I would say that that's a pretty accurate number. And again, I'd have to pull the numbers.
Last I knew, there were only two sub-separate rooms, and they were full day, and there's only nine students in each of those.
Do you know those numbers? I think those are, yeah.
You know, and, and that's another thing that we have had a great deal of discussions with is Desi when we were building the new building, because they would only allot us five preschool classrooms. Even though we knew we were on the cusp of going to six, they still would not honor six classrooms. So when we get ready to move into the new building, that's something we're going to have a conversation about.
And we've already started some of the conversation, like, we've, we've thought about other paths that we can go. But, yeah, I mean, our space is gonna be what our, what our space is allotted, and we're gonna have to get really creative.
I do understand about the space, but my question only was about the accuracy of those numbers.
I'd have to, like I said, I have to pull the numbers, but go ahead.
Yeah, so we have two substantially separate in preschool. We have an ASD and we have a learning center. And throughout the day, there are peer models within those two substantially separate, which they do bring, they push in. We have a great lunch program that goes right into the classroom inclusively. But then in the other classrooms, it's AM, PM, with, there are students with special needs, and then there are peer models within there. But there are parameters around that, and it's really strict rules, as you know, Ms. Morgan. And the mathematics is amazing, because we have students coming in in AM, leaving, students coming in in the PM, but we also have full day, and some of those students are also, so we do, you know, our team chair does a wonderful job, and our department chair had to do a wonderful job, Ms. Fillion, of making all of those numbers work. And it's a very strong program, and I'm very proud to have preschool at Decces.
All right. All I'd like is someone to look to see if that number is accurate, because I don't think it is, the twenty-five.
I have, actually, it's, I have the list that Anne Marie Fillion sent me, the last list, which you just sent this summer for the reporting.
I can just get it right off of Power School.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Another comment about preschool, I know they said, you know, they made a comment about that we're above the state average, but then they also went into about our demographics, which can explain some of that. And I think that's important to remember, because the earlier we catch these children, the more likely that they'll be successful, and you'll be able to take that IEP away. You know, taking it away too soon, I caution on that. So also talking about sub-separate, they also mentioned in the report that we tend to over-rely on, which I see in many districts that happening. So when you're talking about the inclusive professional development, is this also gonna include looking at putting children into sub-separate too, you know, too quickly or too?
So that was one of the things that I had mentioned that we were doing in the procedural manual, is kind of very clear, thank you, Mrs. Chandler.
Thank you.
Some of the very clear parameters about what what requirements you would need to meet in order to be placed in a program that is substantially separate, because that's a very high level of need. And so kind of making that very solid and very uniform across all buildings, we think is going to completely help with that process. One thing that we were, that was recommended in that report, as well as something that we were cited on in our last coordinated program review, was holding on to students in those programs for too long, right? Which is another thing that we're working on with that criteria, with the entrance and exit criteria, because it gives us almost like a rubric, like the eligibility requirements, where I can go down a list, or any team chair could go down a list and say, does Mary meet this? Does she meet this? Does she meet this? Okay, then she meets the level of need for this classroom. And then when you've met your benchmarks, you've gotten your tools, and you're successful, we have the data to show that, then we have exit criteria. Have you done A, B, C, D? Yes, you have. Now it's time to move you to a less restrictive environment. So I think that that's really going to address specifically that, because I agree. I think we have historically been too quick, and we have not, we have historically held on too long. So I'm hoping that we can, by setting those very clear parameters, we'll be able to get every student into the least restrictive environment to service their needs as efficiently as possible. So that, that's not something that we get cited on. Again, that's my hope.
And another thing I noticed in the report is they also talked about different alternative curriculum, such as lively letters, the unique learning, which I know that some of the collaboratives use within their programs. So is there any thought on, on purchasing those or?
Now, we have, we've, over the years, in many different positions that I've been in, looked at a lot of different curriculum. I think our curriculum that we have here is so strong that we what we need to teach is how to modify what we have, which is what we're trying to do through professional development, and how to create that collaboration between special education and general education teachers to be able to kind of implement those modifications and those accommodations for our students. So we have, we have a couple of programs that we've put in, but I would not recommend changing our curriculum. I would recommend getting better at modifying it, so that we have the expectations for our students. Because I think we have a lot of, our students who are diploma-bound students, the curriculum is rich, and we are able to meet them where they are and build on those skills that they have, and keep that rigor as best as we can with their, based on their needs, and it's all very individualized, but I don't know that the answer is just more curriculum.
I think their main concern was the sub-separate programs, and that they didn't see the rigor that they would hope to see. And something like the unique learning program would, I think, not only give you consistency through the sub-separate programs, which they also mentioned, that there isn't that consistency there. It would also help with the rigor as well within there.
And I think the program that, when we spoke to them, the programs that they were concerned about were the ASD program, so the Autism Spectrum Disorders Program, and the Learning Center, which kind of houses a variety of more significant disabilities, but you know, certainly it's not something that we're closed off to, but I, again, think that they saw a snapshot in time and didn't see the big picture of what really happens on a daily basis. So we were able to sit with them and kind of discuss some of the things that we do and some of the things that they didn't get to see. And again, for me, this is not making or breaking our department. This is guidelines for me to improve, because we always need to look to improve. And so I love feedback about it, and I love when the feedback kind of matches what we thought we needed to improve anyway. So I, I look at it as kind of like a gift, like a roadmap, and kind of verification of what we already knew, which is great. And it's something that we had to get done. So I feel positive about it. I think that they, you know, there's some things that I wish they would have seen that they didn't see. There's some things that they misinterpreted that I wish they wouldn't have, but for me, overall, I think with the snapshot of time that they were with us, this to me is solid.
One of the other things that was, of course, concerning, which I've brought up before, is the graduation rates of special ed students, as well as the MCAS schools, that they're not, you know, they've actually dropped. So I know we have the PASS program, which used to be the, I mean, it was a co-op, it's still, they still get a co-op diploma there, right?
Wait, there's a co-op, we still have a couple kids in the co-op, in the co-op program. The co-op and the PASS, so two different, yeah.
The night, which is PASS, right?
Yes.
Right. So is there anything else that is being offered besides that? Because the other thing I know, and maybe it's changed, is the night program doesn't offer, they, the way it used to run is they had a three to four time where there would be a special ed teacher available. But then after that, there wasn't any special ed teacher available. So is there one now there all the time?
So it's, they're consulted through special ed, like special ed teachers consult. I don't believe they have a full-time person in the program.
Do they still have the time before? With the special ed teacher?
I don't, I don't know the answer to that. I'd have to, Jean, that would be a Mrs. Fondulis question, because it's not my program, so I don't know. But I,
A ton of social emotional support.
Yeah, with, that we just,
At school, and it's full, it's always available for the students while they're there.
Right, but what about academic, though?
Yeah, I can ask her more specific. But I know a lot of times our teachers will consult, like she'll ask me for a consult on things. We have talked about some, looking at some alternatives for our students, especially our students who have IEPs, because I think one thing we struggle with is we do have a few students who aren't really making it in the traditional high school setting, but some of the parameters of the PASS program aren't reachable for them. For example, like how many credits you might need to enter that program, which maybe they are struggling just to get there. So we have been looking at some other programs in other districts and talking, kind of like preliminary talks about what we could do and what we might be able to offer that might look a little different to help out that kind of small group of students, to help them be more successful. We're also looking at doing some heavier training around different types of MCAS, because we have like the alt-MCAS training that we send everybody to, but not everybody's very strong in that portfolio piece. It's kind of in the middle. So we've been really kind of looking to focus a couple people in each building who are really good at doing that and sending them to training on that. So we are kind of, we're very aware of it. It's not something that we aren't aware of. And we're also very kind of proactive about looking to see what we might be able to do and create to be able to kind of bridge the gaps that we have.
So one last question. About compliance. Now, did they randomly look at files like, like?
They did the same exact thing. They basically just told me, I want this many preschool files, this many, and just kind of came in and randomly picked. So we didn't get to choose, or otherwise we would have had a hundred percent compliance, because I would have handpicked them. They did it, yeah. They just kind of chose what they chosen. As CPR, same thing, right? Like, they always seem to pick the child who, you know, moved away halfway through the year and, you know, or something happened, and so that just, it's a luck of the draw. Like I said, it's a snapshot in time, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, any other questions? Ms. Spear?
Oh, okay. I was just curious about the whole intern thing from, like, the students from the high school. How does that work? Can you tell me more about that?
So that's a town program. I think it's run through, is it Doreen who runs that program, or? Dr. Shaverhood probably knows more than me.
How, how's this now? Okay. They, it's not working?
Well, how's that?
Hello? No? Okay, well, I'll go ahead.
I can hear you.
They asked for a person, they hired a person that would oversee the interns this summer, and then they asked, they had applications for students to come and apply. And we really had, there were some spots open that were not filled. So next year, if we're able to do the program again, I would urge people to, if they're interested in working, to keep their eye open. And then they would go around to different departments in the town and do odd jobs.
I know that it was fourteen, ages fourteen to eighteen. I know that. And I know some of the jobs that they did around town, because I saw some pictures, that the person who they hired, her name was Morgan, that the town hired to run the program. So I worked with her a little bit in getting some of the students placed. They washed police cars, they painted lamp posts and onset. Some of them had beach cleaning duty. duty, so they would go around, clean the beaches, pick up trash. They helped out at the police station with filing, at town hall and different offices. I know they helped Jean Fondulis at the middle school with the care program. I think they helped Mrs. Chandler put packets together at Deacon's. So, it was kind of like wherever we could find spots for them to do different things. And the thing that I thought was kind of neat about it is they could look at all the different departments of a town, and maybe find like a place that they were interested in being. But it would be ni, they did, they were kind of like soliciting spots at the end of the summer, or at the end of the school year, so I would love to see more people participate. I'm hoping that they will advertise it more, because there were quite a few of the high school students, but there were also some people who were, you know, just summering here with their grandparents, or, and didn't go to school in Wareham. So there were people kind of all different types of kids, but it was, they were a nice group of kids, they really were, and they, I think they had good experiences. It was a little bit of everything. And I think they paid $12 an hour.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, which is pretty good, not too bad.
Yeah.
When you're 14, right?
I just wish that would be like advertised a lot more, because that sounds pretty cool.
Yeah, and I don't know, I know that the high school knew about it, or at least I heard about it from one of the secretaries at the high school, told me about it. So I'm guessing that that's where they advertised first.
Yeah, I think there, I think there was an email sent out, but it was very vague.
Yeah.
So a lot of people were like skeptical about it, I heard, so.
Well, it's their first year, so I'm hoping now that they, they've got a couple people from Wareham High School students who had participated in it, maybe that, the word will get out now, and hopefully they'll, they'll have some more people, because it was nice. And they all had their little, you know, yellow town of Wareham shirts on, so you could identify them, and they were all very helpful, and it was nice.
Emily will square them away.
Yeah.
If they're ready.
All set?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. Ms. Bakayaki?
I just have a couple of questions.
Mm-hmm.
So you talk about the procedural manual, so that's for your staff. Is there a resource like that for parents and families?
So, the Department of Ed has one, and I'm trying to, through the process of going through, like kind of revamping our special ed website, which is like connected off of our Wareham Public Schools website, we're looking at linking all of those things in. So like making a resource page that, that's, so now when a parent has a complaint and wants to go to problem resolution, or wants a resource off of the Department of Ed website, they have to go to all these, kind of maneuver through the Department of Ed website, and it's really not the easiest thing to maneuver through. And I've been doing it for, you know, I've been maneuvering through it, and they keep changing it. But for somebody who's going on it for the first time, it's not very user-friendly, so I'm trying to get as many resources I can, as I can, and I know CPAC has been asking, kind of informally asking parents, like, "What is it that you would like to see there?" So that we can get a list together, and hopefully once the, the beginning of school is over, and we've kind of gotten, the tech department has done everything that they need to do to get us off the ground, we'll be able to kind of pull them in for some consult, to be able to figure out, "How do we put this together?" But I would love it if they could go on Wareham Public Schools, there's a button that says "special education," they click on that, and here's all the resources that they might want to get to. That's what I'd like to do.
So similar, just not put together in a manual.
Yeah.
All in one place.
Yeah, because the procedural manual is, is so much more comprehensive than like what the parents, what I as a parent want to know about what I need for my son.
No, so it would be something different.
Yeah.
But on the same idea for a parent.
Yeah, same idea.
Right. So you talk about the website, so that's a good time to say that there is a new website, and it looks great.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I didn't go to a lot of pages, but just, in general, it just looks, it looks really nice, more organized, and so that's good.
Got a lot of work to do, but we're, we're trying to get like everything. And then we've got a link that goes to CPAC, and we're working on that link, because they have a webpage as well, but we need to work on that webpage, make that a little bit stronger.
Such a great tool, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, because we'd like, kind of like one-stop shopping. I'd like to, to make it as easy as possible for parents and guardians to just go on and click, click, and they have what they need, so.
So my other question is about, so you've outlined for us some of the changes that you'll make based on the reports, so I'm curious how we will know if those are successful, and how you progress, so.
So, every year, well, the last few years when I've been here, I've kind of laid out my goals at the beginning of the year, so that first time that I present to you guys about the 20, 19, 20 school year, that will be what I will present on, is the goals that we have as a department moving forward, and what our action steps are for them, and then as we go throughout the year, I'll update you on the progress of those.
Okay. Because I think it would be really helpful, for me anyway, if it was like a uniform document, you know, "This is what we've done," and then, you know, add the steps to it. It's just hard-
Like what we do with our strategic plan, like that kind of thing.
Yes.
I can do that.
But you know, as the year goes on, because it's, it's just hard, it's hard for me to know, to answer that question, "Are we being successful?" So, yeah, that would be helpful.
Yep, I could do that for you.
All right. Thank you.
Ms. Rossi, go ahead.
So, on the recommendations under programming, you have new programming in the works for high-functioning autism population for 2020. What does that entail? And is that including kids that are in general matriculation, as well as in ASD or TLC? Or is it just for, is, is the criteria going to be different for those that are in more inclusive classes, as opposed to those that are in specialty classes?
So, the program that we're, we're working on right now is kind of to encompass every student, no matter where they are, as far as level of need, how many hours of service per week they receive, as a way to kind of provide a home base for them, that has that applied behavior analysis, board-certified behavior analysis piece, and social worker piece to it, to support them in whatever environment they're in. So if they have an emotional disability as well, and they need to be in a therapeutic learning center environment, they would also have access to this other program as well to support. So we've looked at a couple of different models of what that looks like in other school systems, and we've had the opportunity, Dr. Shaverhood has allowed us to go kind of visit other programs and talk to other people about their programming in this area, because it is a high area of need, and it's a nationwide area of need. There just aren't a lot of programs that address that particular population of students, and a lot of parents have come through CPAC and asked us to help support their students that carry that diagnosis. So really being able to support them, no matter where they lie in a program. It's just being able to provide the support that they need, that's specialized for them, that can get them in the least restrictive place possible, with all the supports that they need.
So now, when you say, um, working with, you know, the ABAs and the social workers, in my experience having a child on a 504, that is a high-functioning, well, I guess the, the diagnostic has changed since his original diagnosis, but as a high-functioning, you know, autistic student who's in a general matriculation with a 504 as opposed to an IEP, or in any specialized, in this, I've never been, as a parent, approached or sent any information saying, "We're putting these services in place based on this 504, and based on this diagnosis." So is that something that is, that something that you're looking to change as well, by going through those 504s necessarily for those students like mine, who are on the higher, higher functioning end, maybe in some instances, but still do, you know, require some services, but maybe not as-
Yes.
-severe?
Yep.
Like I said, I've never been approached, I mean, he's done wonderfully in Wareham Public Schools, I can't complain, and, you know what I mean, about how his inclusion classes have been for him on his own level, but in general, I know that, you know, the, the consensus of people I've, you know, been speaking to that have, you know, had issues with their 504s, or with IEPs, or, you know, things like that, just looking to see what's going to be implemented that may not be now, that will help them, get them followed, get them navigated, and help them understand what's being done in school, like, any sort of like at-home reports, where I know you were talking about getting, you know, the parent involvement and things like that, but, you know, are there, you know, periodic check-ins with these plans, as opposed to just a parent requesting the meeting? Or, you know, any other, you know, kind of tweaks to what is currently in place that will kind of put more parents at ease with these, either the 504s or the IEPs, so that they feel better about the special ed program at Wareham?
Yeah, and I think that's, that's the whole, the area that we're coming out of. As we're seeing our ASD population kind of shift to two different areas of need, it is that high-functioning group that we try to put in the least restrictive environment that just doesn't quite have enough support, and so what does that support need to look like? So, we haven't been talking about it with parents, you know, randomly here and there, with parents who've come to us and asked us, "Boy, he could really, or she could really use a little bit more help," or "Here's an area where they struggle," or like you're saying, "I would really like it if somebody would call me and say, 'This happened today.'" And how do we kind of tweak that out, and make that support very specialized? So that's kind of the, the step we're in now. We've visited three programs that specialize in this programming, and I'm hoping that the information that we're gathering will be able to present a proposal, and be able to get that staff the right way, because I want a program that is staffed and ready to go, so that we can implement it with fidelity, and not just kind of throw it together. So I want to make sure that the programming that we're presenting, when we present it, is good, strong programming, that we have gone out and investigated and collected data on, to make sure that that model that we're going to use is going to be successful for our students. So, yes, all of the things that you said, those are all things that we're thinking, and that we know that we would like to implement.
Now, when you say staff, is that you'd be looking for additional staff in, in conjunction to what you already have?
Yeah.
In, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yep.
Anyone else? All right, I have some questions. I'm going to go through it page by page, but I'm going to skip over what's already been discussed. All right. So, this is voluntary, you kind of like decided you wanted to do this, right?
Well, we have to do it.
Oh, you do?
Yeah, it's not, it's not like you go out and just say, "I want to do it." We have to do it, we have to have somebody come in and evaluate our programs from the outside, as part of what Dusty asks us to do.
Oh, okay, all right.
It can be an individual, it can be an organization, it doesn't-
Interesting.
There's not a lot of kind of specifications around who, who does it.
All right. And, but it, but it essentially didn't reveal anything you didn't already know?
Yeah, there's nothing in there. That, and that was, I think, the most comforting part, because I, you never, when you're running anything, want surprises.
Oh, yeah.
So it's a good feeling to know that your team has already identified the things that you need to improve, so that was a good feeling for me. So it was, it's something that we have to do, we don't have a choice.
Yeah.
And so I was happy with the majority. Like I said, there were things that I wish they would've seen, that we do every day, that in that small amount of time they were there, they did not get to see, but like I said, we were able to have discussions with them about it, but-
Now, in the small amount of time, if I read correctly, this took about three or four months to compile, right?
Right, but three or four months to compile, you got to remember, the amount of time they spent actually in our schools was a couple of days here, a couple of days there. So it wasn't like they were in our schools every day for three months, they were not.
Okay.
Yeah.
And I guess I'd, I'd pose the same question to the superintendent and the assistant superintendent, did this, did this reveal anything that you didn't already know?
Well, I would, um, I don't agree with a lot of, with some of what was stated in the report. I think they were wrong.
Where?
In a number of places, I think they were wrong. So, I don't know that I'm necessarily, I wouldn't know much about the sub-separate programs, but when they ever mention things like the middle school not doing, not taking the same care in gathering data, that is just so blatantly-
Screech.
-absolutely wrong, I can't even talk about it. So, I think there were some areas of that report. They went, and they said things about some of the programs that, I, I don't even know how they gathered that information, because from what I see, and what I know, and what I gather, and all the data that, that I, that I have access to, I think some of it was just, was incorrect.
Did you have any opportunity to rebut that?
I did, I edited it fiercely.
Yeah.
First round, as much as I could, you know, it was kind of a quick turnaround, but I wasn't able to attend the meeting with them, because I, I forget why I-
Yeah, I don't remember why either, but I know Dr. Shaverhood and I attended the meeting with them, with all of her concerns.
And I did my, I did my, you know, crazy edits, but, and they did amend some of what was suggested. And I also edited the work that they did, because they had typos, so there was that editing as well, in the report. But I think overall, that the spirit of, of it, and then their comparison to MCAS scores, I get that they're looking at that population, but they weren't current, they weren't looking at current data, they were looking, and they weren't comparing same data. So they were, so they're looking at data from two years back, one set of data is the, of the MCAS, the next set of data is next generation, so they, they couldn't even really make a statistically significant finding, looking at that data. So, I get it, I understand that we do need to work on communication and all those things that Melissa was talking about, I agree with having that, no matter what, whether they say so or not, it's just smart to do what she's suggesting that is done. But I, I don't have a lot of, I can't put a lot of stake in much of how they came up with their information. So that's just my honest assessment.
And I would say, in, if, you know, if I were to be here in three years, I'm not sure that I would use this particular agency again, because, you know, Dr. Schwam was very passionately talking about a lot of the things that she was upset that they did not see that we do every day, and, and those were some of the things that were in, you know, that we had to change and take out, because those are things that we do every day, and if you're here every day, you see it, and you know what we do. So, it can be kind of unnerving to have somebody say that you don't do it when you know that you're doing it every day, so, there are pieces like that, but-
How much did the report cost?
Ah, I'd have to pull the bill, I don't even, I'd have to, I'm not, off the top of my head, I wouldn't be able to give you an exact figure without looking.
And, and Dr. Shaverhood, would you concur with Dr. Schwam?
I would. You know, it was, when we first got the draft, it was pretty upsetting with some of their findings, because they were so untrue. And our staff, things are in place. The other piece is, while I am certainly a strong proponent of providing our teachers with as much salary as possible, I didn't think it was really appropriate to talk about the fact that we're, we're underpaying our staff, or, those weren't the exact words, but, because that has nothing to do with the report. And it doesn't, it does not diminish the hard work that our staff comes every day, and we'd love to pay them more money. It's just the situation that we're in, and I don't know what the reason of including that. You know, and as well, it was a snapshot, and I wish that there had been a little bit more care with some of the findings, before they had put them in play.
Yeah, that they made definitive statements in that report, that didn't have the backing to make the statement. So if you're going to say something like that, then you need to have the right amount of information to make it a definitive statement, rather than saying of suggestion, right? If it's a suggestion, that's one thing, but if you're making a blatant statement about what you've seen, that's not backed with accurate information, there's a problem.
You know, for instance, I would just, on, doesn't have a page number, but it says, "Team chairs at the elementary level should initiate department meetings to be, to build collegiality and a shared sense of responsibility." Well, I would beg to differ, that I do think that our team chairs do work in collaboration and cooperation with teachers.
Absolutely.
And it's just not a fair assessment.
Yeah, even I know that.
Yeah, exactly, exactly.
So, yeah, so I think with this, you have to take it with a grain of salt, and there are pieces that we've walked away with, that we do know that we need to improve on, there are other pieces that we say, "Wow, you know, that's kind of over here." But in all, you know, in all fairness, I think we need to look at it like that.
So, so the, the page numbers are on the top left, that's probably why.
Oh, thanks, that's probably why I missed it. That's probably why I missed it.
Yeah. So, and this will be, is it on the website right now or?
It is.
Okay, so this is available if anyone, you know, would like to look at it. I had trouble reading it just as a layperson and not someone who's in academia or in, you know, special education in the sense that, okay, like, you know, what does it mean to be Wilson-trained? What is that?
That's a reading program. Yeah, but they didn't really, yeah, they didn't really.
But is it a good one?
Yes.
Okay.
But they also don't mention that it's supported through the district with, the younger students are also using foundations, which is also a Wilson program. And that's within the general education inclusion setting all of the time. So it's a takeoff of that, and that's all over grades K and 1. And they use it at the middle school and, you know, so it's, and they have Wilson-trained people at Minnet. So it is, it's how, you know, we do business.
So, like, how do, how did, do you know how they defined the elementary grades? Was it K through 6, K through 4?
I'm probably guessing K to 5, I would think. But I don't really know. I think they're all over the place.
Because they say upper elementary. I don't know what that means.
I don't either.
I think their upper elementary, it was 3, 4.
I think they thought that's what they called Minnet, I think.
Mm-hmm, that was Minnet.
Okay.
Yeah, that's how I think they divided it up. But then other places, they use the term elementary and a more...
There's a paragraph that kind of stood out to me on page nine, the second from the bottom, about a couple of sentences in maybe, or one sentence in. It says, "At the high school, the emphasis is on inclusion rather than pull-out services. And many sections of English, language, arts, and math, as well as science, are co-taught by general education teachers and a special educator. In fact, the classes were, in fact, several classes were observed where longstanding relationships between a general ed content teacher and a special education teacher contributed to seamless instruction. In short, this seems to have been a recent focus on targeted support for all students and bolstering services for students in inclusion, which seems to have fostered positive results and seems to be meeting the needs of students in inclusion." And they made, they made a big deal of saying how, that the high school, there's a big focus on inclusion. And I always like to try to build on where we see successes. And is that appropriate for the young, the earlier grades to do that? Or is it...
We do.
Yeah, we do.
It's everywhere.
Yeah. Like I said, that the reason why, when I read this report, I wasn't as, I guess, I mean, I took out of it what I needed to move us forward. I took out of it exactly what I needed to move us forward and to come up with a plan for improvement. But knowing, having had, to have done them in the past in other districts, they're always going to not see something that you really want them to see. They're always going to misinterpret something that they saw that they don't know, have enough information about because of how much time they have with you. So again, this to me is a roadmap to improve. It does not define our programming. It does not define who we are as educators. It does not define the hard work that we do every day. It is a tool that we need to do as part of this coordinated program review, and it is, again, a snapshot in time.
Okay.
So I...
Excuse me. So more with the jargon, I guess, just for my own edification. It says, "The preschool introduced," this is on page 10, "the preschool introduces the Owl literacy program and handwriting without tears." Like, what are those?
So they're programs for handwriting and reading. And the reason why they...
Are they good?
Yes.
Yeah.
So I just want to know if we're doing, if they think it's good.
But I think the reason why they're not, when we get these evaluation reports done, they're really not meant for people outside of like our, they're meant for this purpose, right? They're meant for us to sit down and go, "What do we need to do to get better?" So they don't really write them for like the general public. So a lot of the jargons that they're going to use that are things, you know, are abbreviations or acronyms, they're going to put in there because they expect that people in the field are going to be reading it. And I'm sure if we were to say to them, "We would really like it if you could kind of generalize that," they would probably do it. They'd probably charge us, but they'd probably do it. But I think that's the reason why it looks like it's written in that educator jargon because it's meant to be taken by educators as a way to improve ourselves.
All right. Page 12, this just kind of stuck out to me. "According to parent report, students in sub-separate classes have attended special school functions such as field day at times other than their typical grade-level peers." Is that okay?
No.
No, that's not okay.
Okay, are we going to...
Well, it's something that, go ahead.
Yes, yes, we, this was brought to our attention. We've investigated it, and we've had some conversation with parents about it. And we all understand, everybody understands that our students deserve to attend all functions at their grade level, period.
Okay. All right. Another paragraph that jumped out on me on page 15, the critical...
15, did you say?
Page 15, yes. Second paragraph, it was under the question of, "Are there any demographic pockets that are underserved?" And it says here, "Given the reliance on sub-separate programming, administrators at both elementary and high school levels indicated that there are a segment of students who are placed in the learning center programs due to a lack of alternative placement or services who might be better served in a more inclusive way. Specifically, this would include students who scored below average on intelligence but are socially adept." So I guess in reading from that, it sounds like we're putting kids in the learning center that we don't have any other alternatives for them?
And I think that goes back to April's point before about, or I don't, it might have been, I don't remember who had made the point, but about making sure that we're not falling into what we've been cited for in the past, which is not having clear entrance and exit criteria for students so that they don't end up stuck in a program and making sure that we're putting them in programs and programming that's appropriate. So by increasing programming to some of the, to meet some of these needs that maybe aren't being addressed is one of the things that I had put in my goals. Like, we need to think outside the box of the programs that we have and open the new programs.
So at the high school specifically, how many students would we be talking about?
How many students on IEPs?
Well, that are in the learning center.
Or that are not placed in the right place.
Well, you know, that's tough because I would disagree with that statement. That's a statement that they took from one person who said something to them. I would disagree with that statement because we don't...
But you agree that that's an issue, right?
I agree that we could use some tweaking of our programs. That's why we're looking at new programming. But I think the programs that we have now, I would not say we have programs with kids that don't belong there.
How many students specifically at the high school would benefit from such a, you know, more differentiated programming?
I would say probably 15 to 20. Be 15 that I would love to see, not that they don't have programming or that their programming isn't appropriate, but I would love the ability to give them more specialized support.
Yeah, and I bring that up because, you know, and I've hopped on this before about these tiny little class sizes at the high school, you know, for advanced kids, you know, the kids that are accelerating, and God bless them, and that's great programs. But when we've got kids that do well and they're sitting in front of a teacher, you know, four kids at a time, five kids at a time, it makes me wonder if we could be better using resources to help these kids, you know? But that's just me and my soapbox.
Agreed.
It's always great when we can get more resources, but as you know, it's not always possible.
Let's see. A lot of these you already covered. You brought up the point about, you know, whether or not kids are taken off IEPs too soon or what have you, which is really interesting that I read this because the complaint I've heard from previous school committee members is that they never come off IEPs, you know?
And I think that that's the bigger problem for us is not so much that we are taking them off too soon. For me, my analysis of it is that we need to find ways to kind of do interventions that provide them with more opportunity to be in more inclusive and less restrictive settings. I think that's...
All right. And so now, this one is page 23, first paragraph under the question of, "Is there anything that can be done to abate the turnover of staff, teachers, and administrators in the school system, especially in the special ed department?" And, you know, Dr. Shaverhood touched on this, and she sort of explained her concerns, but I'm going to read it anyway. But in the middle, it just stuck out. It said, "It was reported that less qualified teachers..." Oh, I should back up. So, all right, so I'll just start from the beginning. "Several staff suggested that the teacher salaries in Wareham are not commensurate with salaries in neighboring towns. They further remarked that the teachers and administrators are often lost to other towns because of this pay differential. Staff added that often it is difficult to attract high-quality staff with experience, especially in the TLC programs, due to lower salaries. It was reported that less qualified teachers are then hired who, because of a lack of adequate preparation and skills, leave right away." And so, and then Wareham Public Schools did try to close the wage gap by offering a 3% increase in salaries over three years. An analysis of teacher salaries in surrounding towns from 2016 to 2017, though, shows that Wareham teacher salaries fell within the mean for salaries in surrounding towns, demonstrating that Wareham did not pay the lowest salary. And it refers to a table three, and I went back and looked at the table three, and I was surprised that we're paying more than Plymouth. And I know we've lost people to Plymouth. And I wonder, where do they get those numbers? Did we give them those numbers? Because I know we've discussed that quite a bit.
No.
We didn't give them those numbers.
We didn't give them those numbers. They're probably pulling them off the Desi website.
They've got Wareham at a mean salary, no, at a salary of $73,938, and Plymouth at $7,457, and Wareham, Cawver, and Middleborough as well. And I just found that surprising.
That's good.
And I would also just cringe when I read the fact that less qualified teachers are hired. I would...
Cringe.
Right. And you understand, I'm doing my job by bringing it up.
I understand too, but it's...
I think, again, you got to, you have to, and like I said, the reason why I'm looking at this in a different, through a different lens is you're looking at that a couple of people reporting to them out of an entire school system. And you don't know what the, what person that was, what state they're in, what, you know, what their situation is. Are they happy? Are they, like, I don't know any of those answers. So I think it's difficult when you're collecting that type of data. I wasn't really happy in the way that they presented that because I would have liked to know, you know, like, 10 out of 15 teachers surveyed said blah, 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 right? Because it could have quantified it for me. But to just to say several teachers, is that 2? Is it 12? Is it 25? I don't know. So I think there were a lot of pieces, as Dr. Schwam and Dr. Shaverhood said, that weren't really broken down to us in a way that we would have liked to have seen it.
Yeah.
And so it's difficult. Right. And a lot of it was, because we don't, we don't hire teachers that aren't qualified. Might they be less experienced? Maybe. Maybe we, you know, we have two-year veteran teacher as opposed to a 10-year. I don't know. But that's not to say that they're not qualified to do the job.
Yeah. All right. And just to leave on a good note, in that same page, it goes on about the consultant's perspectives, and they mention the professional development. And they say, you know, "All these, all these professional development opportunities seem to be extremely worthwhile and will benefit all students." And I was happy to see that. But that's my comments. So if anyone else has anything? Nothing? Oh, Ms. Morgan.
I just have one last question about, because of all these, you know, inaccuracies that, I mean, like I said, I'm pretty sure they're wrong in the numbers with the preschool. But anyways, the, didn't they come back afterwards and ask clarifying questions?
They didn't come, I know that they met, I was going to say, the principals, they met individually with all the principals and the teams at the schools, and then they came, they never came back to us. They gave us the draft report. We read through the draft report, and then we rebutted and got them back. So I don't know if they...
They never came back?
Yeah. I think they collected their evidence and wrote their report, is what I think, from what I'm hearing.
And they spent very limited amount of time in process. I'm curious to know what they charged.
I have to look.
Whatever it was, it was too much.
If you could just, you know, get back to the committee later, just send an email with how much the report did cost.
I will say that we were able to use the grant program improvement grant for that. So it wasn't, it didn't come out of our LEA budget, not that it matters because money is money. But to me, I felt a little bit better, the fact that we were able to grant fund it because it falls under program improvement, so...
Okay. Anything else on this? Okay, I'm going to move on. Food service staff...
Thank you.
Lunch price, yes, thank you very much.
I would like to introduce Mr. Mike Rousseau, who's our new food service director. And he has some information about, with lunch prices for this year.
So, good evening. It's an honor to be here. And my, my first official interaction with the committee is to point out that I'm requesting to increase the adult meal price that we charge from $3.75 to $4.00 for an adult meal. This is at the recommendation of Desi for all districts within the state of Massachusetts.
Any questions for Mr. Rousseau? Oh, really? I have a question, just, when an adult gets a meal, is it the same meal the students get?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Well, waiting for the [inaudible] is really great. There's a little bit of a bonus there.
Do you still have the plants and everything, the...
I eat a salad every day when I was subbing.
Oh, boy.
Our new growing kits were delivered last week at Deacon's School, and I'm so excited to choose which seeds we're going to grow this year.
So that's awesome. Are we going to continue that at the new school?
Yes.
Yeah. I hope so.
We've talked about it at the building committee.
Awesome.
So I can't wait to plug it in and get planting. I think my young students are going to be thrilled watching all of those plants grow.
I think I saw on Facebook, someone's trying to get rid of like 10 chickens. They can get some eggs. I mean, run them around.
Middle school had chickens, and the kids love having the chickens. Helps with the cranberry bogs.
That's awesome. All right, so we're going to, we need a vote on that? All right, so we need a vote to, whether or not to approve going to $4.00 for adult meals at all schools? Need a motion? All right, a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
I do have one question. I'm sorry, I shouldn't have asked it before. So are you saying that all districts in the state will charge $4.00 for an adult meal?
At a minimum. There are some that are charging $5.50. The average is $4.25.
Okay. All right, thank you. Thank you.
Okay. So no further discussion. I'll take a vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Passes 5-0-0.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome. Okay, approval of articles for Fall Town Meeting warrant.
All right, we have two articles that I sent you for your review. The first one is McInnes-Vento. This is an article that happens every year. I would point out to you that if you'll see FY 2019, the reason why it says 2019, the funds were received in the fiscal year 2019. I think they came in in June. So it's really not 2020. So it's the funds that we received this year. We're asking you to please vote on this. This will then go to the selectmen, and we will ask them to insert it into Fall Town And if you would vote to approve this, one of the things that we would like to earmark the funds for would be to lease a bus because right now, after our bus inspections, we have zero reserves. So it's vital that we are able to start beefing up our fleet because it's a matter of time when we will not have enough running buses. So this would be what the money would be earmarked for should you vote for it, the selectmen, and then, of course, at the town meeting. So I'd ask you to please approve this.
Okay, looking for a motion to approve the article?
Could I ask a question first?
Oh, yeah.
Is there a dollar amount?
There will be a dollar amount inserted.
We don't know what that is.
I think it's something like $28,000.
Oh, so, okay.
Yeah, it's not significant. I mean, that's significant, but not like $100,000.
Not what we'd expect it to be. Right, okay.
Anything else?
That's it. Thank you.
All right. Do you have a motion to approve the warrant article pertaining to McInnes-Vento?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay. Motion is second. Motion is second, any further discussion? No, okay. Uh, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Passes five zero zero.
Thank you. The next, the next one is asking for a transfer of money. Now, through the last several years, the town has voted money into different, um, accounts. For instance, the Deacon's PA system currently has twenty-one thousand nine hundred eighteen dollars and five cents. This project is closed, but the money remains there. We cannot access the money for anything but the Deacon's PA system, as well the, the roof, the maintenance, uh, right now, we're still tapping a little bit of that money, but by Fall Town Meeting, we will have the balance. What we would like to do then is to combine these into one fund that could be used for technology, maintenance, and equipment in the Wareham schools. So, if I would have some project that needed to be repaired or, or purchased at the high school, this would allow us to tap this money to do so. So, we're just merely trying to compress everything into one account that is general that we can use. So, I would ask the committee to please approve this, and again, this will go to the board of selectmen and then town meeting, should you vote to approve.
Um, do we have a motion to approve this warrant article to repurpose funds that were previously, um, approved?
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Uh, I just have a quick, just a point, I guess, so, so, for example, we're not, we're not moving forward with the PA system, because it's moved.
Well, the PA system is in place, and we did, um, upgrade the PA system, and this was money that was left over.
Ah, okay, okay. All right, um, so we have a motion is second, okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Passes five zero zero.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Sure. Um, acceptance of gifts.
Okay, um, I would recommend the following acceptance of gifts, the A-plus reward to stop and shop of five hundred and eighty-five dollars and fifty-three cents to mine it, a meat slicer to the culinary class from the Harwich Yacht Club, and one thousand dollars to the junior research grant from a CERN LLC for expenses occurred in participating field research, and a copier from the Onset Bay Association. I would ask the committee to please approve all these gifts.
Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
I have a motion is second, any further discussion?
I just would like to take the opportunity to, uh, point out how generous the community is, and how fortunate we are to live in a community where we're the recipient of all these gifts over and over, and also, um, the teachers who reach out to the community, in this case, it was Beth Giafrida, um, you know, for these opportunities.
I totally agree, I'm, I'm always humbled at this part of the meeting, you know, just the, the generosity of the town and, and businesses. So, any further discussion on this? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Passes five zero zero.
Okay.
And then, moving on to report of the superintendent, first item, approval of bills and payroll warrants.
Along with all of the bills and payrolls, I would add the payroll week, August seventeenth, in the amount of one hundred thirty-four thousand nine hundred twenty-five dollars and fourteen cents, and the bill warrant for August twenty-ninth, in the amount of one hundred ninety-four dollars, one hundred, one hundred and ninety-four thousand one hundred and three dollars and twenty-three cents. So, I would ask you to please approve all of this, all of these amounts.
Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
All right, motion is second, any discussion? No? All right. Uh, I just, I just had a question, just, I mean, it's, this like jumped out at me, because we haven't met in so long, right? And so, I counted seventeen of them, and now I'll be adding another two, that's nineteen, and it's stuff that had already been signed and approved by, you know, me or April, um, and I'm just kinda curious, like, what the process is beginning to end for all of this, because it seems like the cart before the horse, and this is different than when I used to be on the school committee, I just like to, and I asked Dr. Shaverhood to, I was gonna ask this question, so she's prepared.
I was very grateful for that, too. So, from beginning to end, what happens, the staff and the principal meet, they decide they wanna purchase some item, a purchase order is created from the school, I'm then notified, and then I go in and I approve. If the money does not exist in that account, they cannot move forward, it red flags them. But let's just say there's enough money in that account, it gets approved, I then let the person know that, yes, it's been approved, they print the PO out, and it's sent to the company or wherever they're purchasing the item from. Once the entire order has been received and accounted for from the school, the PO and the invoice is sent to the business office to be paid. The bookkeepers process the bills, and the POs and the invoices are put together in a warrant. On Friday, I receive the warrants for the week to review, after I sign off, they're sent back to the bookkeepers, they then sign or send it to you for your signatures and send to the other committee for information. Our warrants must be turned in to the accounting office by eleven o'clock on Tuesday, because they are then reviewed and prepared, because they go to the selectmen, who then review them and sign. So, if we don't have them in by eleven o'clock, um, it's very difficult to get those warrants approved that week because of our timetable. Once the selectmen approve, the checks are cut and then sent out, that's our process.
Okay, so, along the way, let's say, you know, I, I get an email from one of the bookkeepers, and, and, all right, I, I, I don't wanna sign it for whatever reason, and it gets put on hold, so they don't get paid.
If you would put it on hold, everything on that warrant gets...
Everything on that warrant. Could you, you could probably pull something.
You can.
Yeah.
And we have...
Yeah, you almost did, recently, so, um, there's that. And then, so, so then, so then, at this point, when we just voted on these, i- if we decided not to vote on one of them, that would include everything on that warrant, and then, and then, they wouldn't get paid, right?
No. This is already, this has already been through your approvals.
It's already been through. So, then, like, what's the point of this?
Just to acknowledge it publicly, that it's been voted upon, and it goes into record.
Okay, so, it's really kinda like non-binding, but it's, but it's just a recognition of it. Yeah, okay. So, we, I mean, we kinda can't vote, no, I mean, I don't know.
No, but I, I guess what I would tell you is, once you get the warrants and you start looking through them, if you have questions, please contact us, because there may be something that you, you question, and we should be able to answer that for you.
Okay.
But it is vital to meet these time...
Yeah, and I know, when I first came on his chair, you made it abundantly clear how important the mine it one is, and how that one has to, because that's, that can really, we can get fined, like, per day if things aren't in, you know, but that hasn't happened at all.
Not come good.
Yeah, yeah. So, um, so, okay, so, moving on, that's payrolls, all right, great, um, budget FY twenty... Oh, oh, thank, thank you. Thank you. All right. Um, so, we have a motion is second, any further discussion? No, okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? You've just approved things that have already been paid. Good job. So, moving on to, um, budget FY twenty.
Right.
Can I just point out a typo on that page? Um, you have FY seventeen budget listed twice, two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen, I believe that one of them is, should be the seventeen eighteen, because that is missing on the headline on that first page, um, on the budget, um, not on the first page, on the second.
You mean, on this?
Yep, second, second section says FY seventeen twice.
Oh, right, thank you. Okay, so, what I would ask you to do is, you, I sent you the line item budget, there's been some adjustments made from the original budget that you voted upon, and I also provided you with the major accounts. So, I would just ask you to take a revote of this budget. The bottom line of twenty-nine million four hundred thirty thousand seven hundred thirty-seven dollars has not changed from one budget to the other, um, but there has been some adjustments in the line, so, therefore, we would just like a new vote on this, and we'll be moving forward.
Hold on, so, so, before we begin, do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
A second? No second?
Wait, I'm confused, what are we approving?
We're not approving it, yeah, you have to vote on it, but we need a motion, I want, before discussion, I want a motion and a second. So, I have a motion to approve.
Can I just point out another typo? Just to get it into record, that if we're voting on it, that it's incorrect.
I think, Mary's second, so, 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 we have a motion on the, on the, on the table, um, we're, we're up for discussion. Ms. Rossi, go ahead.
On the final p, on the last column as well, it says two thousand and ten to two thousand and twenty, so, just making, just making sure we know it's a one-year, not a ten-year span. Thank you.
Okay, um, further discussion? Anyone? None? All right, so, so, and, and if we're gonna approve this, it's gonna, it's gonna be everything, right? It's gonna be, it's in a de facto way, it'll be vote on the line items, and a vote on transfers, all in one vote.
Yes.
So, this, this will, this will approve everything. All right. Um, motion's been made and seconded, no further discussion, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Passes five zero zero. Thank you.
Okay, I have a few more things, if you don't mind.
Sure.
Well, we are getting ready to open, just to give you a summary of the summer. The CARE camp had two hundred and ten students enrolled in grades K through seven at the middle school. The theme was superheroes, and so, if you were here on the last day, you saw Spider-Man, which was a really great Spider-Man person, they came from Boston. We had, they had classes of robotics, drama, science, explorers, woodshop, art, musical theater, Operation Grand Pals, cooking Legos, and the list just went on and on. Our students had the opportunity of working with Buzzards Bay Coalition to spend a week at the onset bay, onset beach, looking to kayak, swim, sail, and just explore. Thirty-five students had an opportunity to partner with Mass Auburn and Makepeace to explore nature and hiking in Red Brook, and over fifty students had an opportunity to partner with the Gleason YMCA. A hundred students had an off-site experience at the Cape Cod Canal, and field trips included Mile Standish, uh, Blue Hills, hiking, Patriots Place, it just went on and on. The beyond-school kids program had nine weeks of program to over forty students, they too, had a number of field trips. The high school sail program had approximately fifty-five students enrolled, from farm to table, fishing, facelift, art, a short story, and it was, a good time was had by all. We had the first pass summer program, it was a five-week program from nine to twelve, and it really provided the students an opportunity to look at personal growth, investigation of life purpose and well-being. It was successful, they took field trips to the Amazon Center, Spa, Tech, and Bridgewater, and Bristol Community College. And our fifth quarter, twenty-nine students enrolled and completed our fifth quarter course. So, our summer program was very, very busy. Uh, the bus routes are up on the website, and we have been watching, it's a much different scenario than last year, much calmer. We have approximately, um, free at this time, one thousand ninety-four students will be riding, paid two hundred and eight, and then, we're still questioning a few other students on responding or not. So, roots have been established, and it's been, uh, placed on the new website. A lot of summer work was going on, the high school's getting new bleachers, there's been some HVA minor work at the high school, so, we had some classrooms that did not have some fresh air piping in, that's been corrected. The cafeteria at the middle school now is air-conditioned. If you wanna see a beautiful gym floor, go to the middle school, it was professionally redone, and it just glistens. And the middle school's been having some HVAC work as well. The Deacon's has had carpet torn out with tile being replaced, and we have the fence around the preschool area that we've been sorely waiting for. Our mine, our building project is well on the way, we are now into the second phase of, uh, construction, they'll be breaking ground, and we have a meeting on Monday morning with the contractors to go over the procedures, and you'll start to see progress on the site prep work beginning in about a week or so. So, it's been a busy place, the custodians have worked extremely hard this summer, the buildings look great, staff have been in, and we are opening our doors on Monday to staff.
Uh, Dr. Shaverhood, do you wanna tell the story about the diploma that the high school gave this summer?
The diploma, IB?
No. Um, so, they, Andrea Cannon and Kim Kavicki and a few other people, um, there was a student who needed one more course in order to obtain her diploma, and her dad was very, very ill. She completed the course and was, was received the diploma, and the mom called and asked if they could do something. So, the nurse, the, Toby, the Andrea and Kim and the nurses decorated, and they played pomp and circumstance, and they had the gown, and they, uh, they did all of what they could and presented the diploma so, to her, so her dad could be there. It was quite emotional, um, he has since passed away, so it was a wonderful gift that I think, and, and it was this summer, it was completely off the grid, um, you know, another example of what happens in Wareham for our kids.
Who was present for that?
Kim Kavicki and Andrea Cannon were, uh, you know, sort of the maestros behind the scenes.
Wow, yeah, you don't...
It's a big deal.
Yeah, you don't, you don't see that in a district review, you know, it's, it happens, and it's amazing.
It is.
Pretty sure I saw that video, Stevie Faniel might have been there, too, yeah.
It's nice.
Really nice, yeah.
Yeah. All right, oh, okay, um, uh, any, any questions or anything for the superintendent's report?
No, could I just say, I participated in one of the summer programs, it was a walking club that Nicole Starmer did at the track, and of course, we couldn't finish because of triple E. It was very disappointing.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, and I, um, I was gonna, I was gonna bring that up when he was doing the, um, the report about the bleachers, um, so, those are, those are, when are they gonna be done?
Soon.
Wow.
Everything's out.
Nice.
We're hoping it gets done soon.
Great.
Um, you know, and the other thing that I would say, because of the triple E virus that's swirling around, uh, we've stopped all activities right at six o'clock, per the health department, and we will be looking at how we're going to manage the football games, um, because nothing will change until after the first frost. So, there's going to be some adjustment in our athletic events, so please stay tuned, and we'll do our best to publicize our changes.
Yeah. And, uh, over the summer, did you meet with capital planning?
I did. I was able to meet with capital planning, um, we're going to be looking at purchasing some school buses, they certainly are very supportive and recognize the fact that we have got to maintain our fleet, um, and so, we have a plan that we're looking at bringing one on pretty quickly, and then, another additional, and then, we're looking at, with any hope, at Fall Town Meeting, being able to do a larger HVAC project throughout our two buildings.
Okay. And I guess I'll just point out an observation I noticed, uh, on my way home before this meeting, I live down Cromisid, and so, I drive by Swift, Swift Beach Road all the time, and, and for the first time ever, I saw a police sign up, one of them, you know, ones that have the letters on it with the, you know, they changed, they put a phrase up there, and it said, "Crosswalk Ahead." And I was like, I don't think there've been any accidents, I think they put it up because school's starting, and they're reminding people, and they have it on the other side, too, coming the other way. So, kudos to the police, if that's why they did it. Yeah. Um, and with that, I guess, uh, we're moving on to report of the school committee, mask, voting delegate, and alternate. So, every year, we have to do this, um, choose a Massachusetts Association for School Committee voting delegate and alternate, who was interested?
Can I ask a question about what it entails before I decide if there's an interest or not? Just so that we know, anyone going into it, what that requires additionally to our meetings here.
So, I did, I did it for the first time last year, um, and basically, they have, during one of those days, and it might be Thursday, it's one of, one of the three days, they, they have a big pow-wow of, like, all the mass delegates get together in one of these big conference rooms, and prior to that, they, they put out a big list of issues, I guess, or, you know, things to be considered to the school committees around the whole state, and whether or not, you know, the, you as a school committee wanna vote on these initiatives or ballot questions or whatever, that, that the Massachusetts Association of School Committees has an interest in or what have you, and so, you as a school committee decide if you want, this is like, you know, months before the, the meeting, uh, you decide if you're gonna vote on certain, certain things, you know, certain initiatives throughout the state, you don't have to vote on any of them, but let's say, let's say we do, and we did last year. And so, then, you represent the Wareham School Committee at this big meeting, and, and when they come, it comes up for a vote, you know, you vote, you vote how the Wareham... and when it comes up for a vote, you know, you vote how the Wareham School Committee voted. And so I was like really a fish out of water because I was, you know, I went there, you know, representing. I knew what the votes were, I had them all down. But then it's kind of like a town meeting because now everybody gets up and they want to amend this and amend that and then what's left is like not what we voted on and I didn't feel comfortable voting on a lot of it. I abstained for a lot of it. But I'll get, if I'm doing it this year, I'll get direction on you guys on whether or not I can, you know, use some discretion there.
Where are the meetings held?
It's only, it's one meeting.
One meeting?
And it's at the conference, it's during the conference.
Oh, in November?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. So anyone interested in being a mask voting delegate, or the mask voting delegate?
I'll be at all four days of the conference so I can do it if anyone doesn't want it.
Anyway, so I have a motion to approve April Rossi as the mask voting delegate.
So moved.
Seconded.
So I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Passes 5-0-0. So we need an alternate as well, who would like to be an alternate? Then that's in case you can't make it or something. But by the way, I mean, I think everyone's allowed to attend that meeting, right? But you're the only one that's going to vote. So who would like to be an alternate?
I nominate Mike Flaherty.
I wasn't alternate last time, I ended up being the person, so sure, I could do it, alternate. So I have a motion and a second to have myself be the mask alternate. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? I'll abstain, but yeah, I'll do it, you know. I'm abstaining, yeah, yeah, I'm abstaining, just... So that's it. So moving on to any other business? Oh, well, before that, anyone else have any other reports? When is the, when do we start up the policy review?
Soon. We do need to get the policy review going. There's a couple policies that we would like to bring forward to look at, so sooner the better.
Yeah, okay, and I think Mary, the chair, okay. All right, moving on to any other business, any other business, anyone? Ms. Rossi?
I just want to say that for anyone who hasn't either navigated the new website or Power School app, I feel that it's going to be much more user-friendly for parents. I think taking into consideration how many parents and how many people primarily use their phone as their source of internet, it's much more mobile-friendly. So I think navigating that, I did hear a lot over the past year, you know, about people having issues trying to navigate things mobily because it didn't necessarily translate in the state it was in previously to being very easy to maneuver on a cellphone. At least I have an Android-based, a Samsung phone. I've had, it's been super easy to navigate and Power School did go live so now everybody can get their schedules and see where their kids are at. It went, I believe, at 5 o'clock today and it was nice to see even the changes in Power School to navigate, that there's a lot more drop-down menus and options to kind of snapshot on the mobile. So I just want to applaud us for kind of getting very, very forward in the mobile accessibility department because again, I think a lot of parents are using their phones as their primary source of internet as opposed to having a desktop or laptop computer access. So I think that's going to be huge in helping us communicate and get things out to parents.
Good.
Okay. I'll also add that somebody brought up the matter of senior privileges and we'll be voting on that next year. I was going to tease my son about that, I should have, but anyway. Any other for the business? All right. Seeing none, I guess I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Seconded.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstentions? We're adjourned.